10:00 AM in the Commissioners' Court Room, the County Administration, Building 200, Siateck Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the invocation, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. Commissioner Catalina will lead us.
Our heavenly Father, we pause mindful of many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with us here this morning as we make decisions that affect all of Brazos County. And dear Lord, please be with our first responders and all of our military families around the world to make it possible for us to be here today. And also, Lord, as we approach this holiday season, please make it a safe and joyous season for all the residents of Brazos County and the world. In the Lord's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Thank you, Commissioner.
Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns. And Karen Hall, you want to speak?
I think everybody's (inaudible). I learned a whisper in a song, so we'll just leave that. Outside the whistle. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today and for your patience on this item. I've done some little bit of research on this issue of paper backup ballots. I found something, a retired FBI agent, Clint Watts, has appeared before Congress on the issue of security. He talked about the eroding trust in the authority of the election system. He said, and I quote, "All voting systems should immediately institute paper backup ballots that provide a verifiable audit trail to confirm results." That may be part of what started the U.S. House bill that I know you're all familiar with. I know you know we have a Texas bill, 22, that addresses the same issue of having backup ballots. I also contacted the League of Women Voters. Cindy Leatherby sent me their position. I'm just going to read just the grade. Number one, League of Women Voters, Texans deserve voting machines that create a paper backup record for every vote. A voter-verified paper-backup record allows each voter to check that his or her ballot was passed as intended, and paper trails are the only reliable way to audit the vote count and vote. The one thing we know is you cannot hack a piece of paper. The next thing we did, we started this on Friday, someone who knows we have a little group that needs some dot com Brian, and we thought, well, let's just take the polls of the counties. So in four days, and I do have a copy for each of you, we have collected 173 signatures. I had stated there, I thought it would probably be about an 80/20 split, but most people want a paper, well, a little more than that. I'll think 173, 165 want paper ballot. This is the idea that we did put in the back that the paper ballot would cost $125,000 per year. We wanted them to know that. They come and choose to sign on this side. If they signed over here, we did have eight people do that, this means no paper ballot. And we asked if they were registered voters. I did have one individual, he's not registered, and right went the paper ballot, and he said he sent a $4,000 tax check, and he felt he had to write something. So I agree with him, my level of signing. You can count that any way you want. I also had two people who didn't ask for one, the paper ballot system, but would not sign. So you can add two. So you've actually got two more. I could not even decide. We also asked them if they would consider contributing $5 if I did start this gold funding page to help you all. And I'd say a good chunk of them did. Couple people actually tried to hand me $5. Okay. I got Commissioner Mary, you had expressed concern that maybe, you know, we would just sit around. A lot of people put their phone numbers for you to call if you wish to address that issue. All I can tell you is I assure you, every one of these were one-on-one. Paper was not just laid out somewhere. They were one-on-one talking person, and sure that they knew the cost involved in getting paper ballot backup. I was here three weeks ago, I mentioned turning in a Freedom of Information request. I was three weeks ago, I still haven't heard. I have more concerns now about the non-reply. But after reading the workshop minutes, I have half the information I asked for. And from what I understand, that you will be purchasing from Hart 420 machines, if you look at the ESS, it's 350. Wondering how like the difference of that, I found it in the Texas Election Code, Section 129.057, one sentence. A direct recording electronic voting machine, which is a percent of what Hart is, those are deployed for early voting, may not be deployed on election day. So whatever you use for your early voting, you've got to set aside. That's why you have a higher number for the Harts. Now, scanners for ESS also fall into that category, but there would only be five of those. Judge Peters, when I spoke to you, you had talked about pressure of time here we were running into. So I called ESS, and I said, question, from the time the contract is signed, how long will it take to deliver these machines? The reply was, we're in stock for 30 days. You know, since I had him on the phone, I asked him if they could justify the $125,000 per year cost, and he said he didn't know without looking at the numbers, but asked me to ask him to consider having the reps from both companies come back, talk to them, try to get these numbers, try to see what's going on. It's a good idea. My real honest, you are probably facing some pressure from staff, which want the non-paper. I saw Bob Davis and the Republican voting judges and three, they're all in the other team. And I find it gets me tough, so I need some good justification. I have a sister-in-law who lives in Rio Grande City. Do you all kind of know where Rio Grande City is? It's Starr County. They just purchased the decimus system. I don't know if it's the poorest county in the state, but they're pretty close to it, but they were intending to provide paper-backup ballots for their citizens. Not that I didn't believe her, but I called Starr County, spoke to their election person. Eli, is that good at this? That's Camila. He said they got them in October, used them in the November election. That was a pretty big election. On a very short range, very good for their staff down there. And I asked him to tell me about any problems that they ran into, and he said none. I asked again, none? Sure? None? He said absolutely none.
Judge, I just need to point out, we're at seven minutes, 30 seconds. Okay.
(Inaudible) Sorry about that, I didn't realize that.
(Inaudible)
Could I ask you to do your due diligence, consider all the evidence, and most of all, what you want by the registered voters and the taxpayers, and the county who are also known as (inaudible). Thank you for your time and patience, so sorry for being so far.
Okay. Thank you. Jody.
Do we have a time limit? Because it wasn't stated before, so...
Well, it's in the program.
So if you would make sure that everyone understands that that would be proper.
It's in the back, yes.
I know, I know. The problem is, everybody doesn't, everybody doesn't look at this, so stating it makes it...
Four minutes per person.
Four minutes, that's what I was thinking.
That's why I was asking you to state it.
Okay.
It's four minutes, not three.
Three is sitting in a police station.
Yeah, counsel is...
That's okay, that's fine, that's fine.
There we go.
It's on.
All right. Give us your name, and it's four minutes.
Roy Flores.
Okay.
And I want to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to y'all. I want to talk about some of the things that, touch on some of the things that Karen mentioned, but I want to talk also about how in the past, when, and I'm sure some of y'all remember this, when I was little, we used to see our parents come to the gymnasiums and vote during voting time. And of course, it was the only day that the gymnasiums were closed to the students that we, you know, so we were being curious, we'd always want to look in there to try and see what was going on. What are these people doing? Because we'd see our parents go in there, we'd see our neighbors, people we admire, go in and do their civic duty. And it was very powerful. It was basically showing the children in our community that are the grownups and people we looked up to, were doing their civic duty. And basically, kind of showing us that we need to fill some pretty big footsteps. We've gotten away from that. In the past, I believe there's been some scare about, that's unfounded, that supposedly voters would attack the children, or, you know, come that they would go into the schools and get past the security guards and the teachers and everything and get to the children. It's totally unfounded, and there, I don't think there's ever been a case of that. But what ended up happening is we started losing voting locations. And so we no longer go to our nearest school. The children no longer see us do our civic duty. And so there's no, there's no footsteps to follow there. And we've probably lost at least one, if not more, generations of voters because of it. In the minority districts, we've had voting booths change locations every other election. Where in the past, people would get off at six o'clock, go stand in line, and wait 30 minutes, and then they're told, oh, you don't vote here, you have to go down the road to go vote. So we've lost a lot of voters like that as well. Now, talking about this issue about paper ballots, I think it's very important. And especially if the state is going to, is talking about passing a bill, we don't want to be behind the curve and then have to start all over, start this process all over again, and then go back and get more machines or change the machines up. So I went to the little presentation that y'all had, and I tried the machines. And to tell you the truth, I was very impressed with the paper ballot one. There was no wheel to turn, and it was very simple, straightforward, and I would like to see y'all go with that one. And I sure appreciate your time, and like I said, y'all have a very Merry Christmas.
Okay. Thank you, Roy. Jody, you want to speak?
Please.
Give us your name.
I'm Jody Quimby. I'm here once again to discuss with you the subject of voting equipment. You'll be making that decision very soon, I understand. So just again, I'm asking you to please buy the ESS hybrid electronic system that utilizes a paper ballot. There's good reason for that, I'll talk about that more. One of the things that I wanted to point out, I realize that not everything on the Internet is believable, but I got this from a reputable place, indicates that there are 15 of the 35 states in the United States that still will allow only electronic voting without a paper trail. Realize the remainder would be some that still use a paper ballot, some use a electron, give the option of electronic and paper, but there are only 15 of them that allow a DRE without a paper trail. So there's significant interest in the United States for a paper trail for voting. Accountants wouldn't have a job if there wasn't a need for a paper trail, okay? One of the things that is concerning from some about the ESS equipment is the cost, and I'll call your attention to the five-year chart that the county provided with the PowerPoint This shows the first-year cost and the remaining four years to make it a five-year chart. The first year is $122,000 more for ESS. The other four years shows that the difference is somewhere between $73,000 and $93,000 more for the ESS equipment. And I point that out because if you're looking at different proposals and you see that there's that much difference in the cost, there's something different in what those vendors are providing. And I submit to you, if these numbers are considered equal as far as value, I think that's a mistake. Because I understand there's a big difference in the service that ESS provides. Now, I don't know what these numbers include, I hope you do. I hope you drill down into all these numbers and find out why they are so different. Because on the surface, looking at them, it's apples and oranges, okay? So the difference is the performance of the two systems, like we've talked about before. The ESS system will allow you to vote electronically and have a paper ballot to validate what you, what your selections are. Not only that, in the end, the whole process with ESS, you have an electronic system and you also have a paper record that's undeniable. So on the other side, with Hart, you have an electronic record, and that's all you have. When you do a recount with Hart, you print out the same results you had on election day. With ESS, you go back to the paper ballot and count the paper ballots, because that's the source of the information. It's very different in what you get. So I think this is a great opportunity for Brazos County to spend some money for a great value. You're going to get accountability in a greater way, you get more transparency, that's what public service is about, is accountability and transparency, so that everybody understands what's going on. And any questions someone may have about the election results can be proven with the paper ballot. So thank you, Mr. Eric. I will cease and please buy the ESS equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public input? We will move on and consider and take action on Agenda Ips 3 through 26. Did Judge Garcia get in? I know he had magistrations this morning.
No, he hasn't.
He hasn't come in yet.
He hasn't, yeah.
We can, we can go ahead and do the resolution with Judge McCleary, maybe Judge Garcia will make it. Number three is a resolution honoring Judge Michael McCleary for 12 years of service to Brazos County.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made second. Come up to the front, Judge. Go over there, okay.
(Inaudible)
Judge, we appreciate the 12 years that you spent with Brazos County for everything you've done. Of course, we, the Commissioners' Court, has got a resolution that we wanted to do in your honors. So honoring Judge Michael P. McCleary, whereas on January 1st, 2007, Judge Michael McCleary began working for Brazos County, and whereas Judge Michael P. McCleary has served as Justice of the Peace Precinct 1 in Brazos County for 12 years, presiding over civil and Class C criminal cases, signing warrants for local police agencies, and fulfilling many other duties, and whereas Judge Michael P. McCleary has proven to be a dedicated public servant, and whereas Judge Michael P. McCleary will retire December 31st, 2018. Now therefore, be resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will take this opportunity to honor Brazos County Justice of the Peace Precinct 1, and thank him for his years of service with Brazos County and to its citizens, and to wish him the very best in his retirement, duly adopted by voice of the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County on the 18th day of December.
Thank you.
(Applause) In addition to this, we've got a plaque, Michael McCleary, Justice of the Peace Precinct 1, Brazos County, in appreciation for your 12 years of dedicated service to Brazos County, and then a county seat.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to speak. Four minutes.
(Laughter) I think I can do it in less than four minutes. Being a Justice of the Peace for Brazos County has been, for the last 12 years, has been very rewarding for me. It's confirmed one of the beliefs that I've had for 40-something years now, the citizens of Brazos County are probably the finest in the state of Texas, probably the finest anywhere in the U.S. It's been a rewarding experience for me as much as a learning experience. I want to thank everybody in the county that I've met in the last 12 years. I've got a lot of new friends because of this position that I held for a while. I'd like to thank the Commissioners' Court for working with me all these years and helping me with my budget. Irene, thank you, ma'am. You know, it's a wonderful community, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank y'all very much.
And we did vote on that, correct?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Judge Garcia, ah, there you are, okay. All right, come in. I know you were doing magistrations this morning, so you were busy. Number four is resolution for honoring Judge Louis Garcia Jr. for 14 years of service to Brazos County.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Come on up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Judge, we appreciate the last four years that you served as JP honorably, and we appreciate the years that you spent as constable too. So the Commissioners' Court did a resolution honoring Judge Louis Garcia Jr., whereas Judge Louis Garcia Jr. served as a reserve deputy from, in 1979, for the Lake Richard Fronter House, who at the time was elected Precinct 4 Constable. After Fronter House's passing, Judge Garcia ran for the vacant seat and was elected Constable and held that position through 1992. And whereas Judge Louis Garcia has served Brazos County as Justice of the Peace Precinct 4, for four years, presiding over civil, Class C criminal cases, signing warrants for local police agencies, and many other duties. And whereas Judge Louis Garcia will retire December 31st, 2018. Now therefore, be resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County takes the opportunity to honor Brazos County Justice of the Peace Precinct 4 Louis Garcia, and to thank him for his years of service to Brazos County and to its citizens, and to wish him the very best in his retirement, duly adopted by vote, this Commissioners' Court, Brazos County, on the 18th day of December, 2018. We've also got a plaque, Louis Garcia Jr., Justice of the Peace Precinct 4 Brazos County, in appreciation for the 14 years of dedicated service to Brazos County, and a seat. And you're also welcome to speak. I know you're a public speaker, and you love getting up front, but limited to four minutes.
Well, I want to thank the Commissioners' Court, first of all, for all the help, and also their staff, because they were always there for me. The first time I had to go see a body. Judge McCleary, thank you. Thank all of you. Appreciate it.
But again, I want to thank both of you for your service to Brazos County, for the years that you spent, and the duties you've fulfilled over the years, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wish you well in retirement. I believe we voted on that, correct?
We did.
Okay. Number five is approval of official bonds, and the bonds this week are Rick Hill, JP Ingram, James Locke, Amanda Matsky, Dwayne Peters, and Jeff Ries.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval of the following job descriptions.
Move approval A and B. Second.
Motion made seconded A and B. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is payment authorization in the amount of $300 to Matrix Technologies to update all zones within 24-hour central station for the tax office. Purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is payment authorization to OCC Construction Corporation in the amount of $317,625.28. Purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of two county employees to take Certified Instructor Course for Defensive Driving. This online training course will be $1,555 per instructor.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion?
Judge, just for the record, I'm coming back, if you have to do that, I would see me risk management.
Yes.
Yes, risk management, head.
And the sheriff's office, I think, somewhere in the sheriff's office.
It says only two employees.
Yeah, one sheriff's office employee and risk management.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of assignment of vendor name change from Davis Fire Equipment to Pipe Barker Fire and Safety LLC.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of assignment for a vendor name change from A1 Professional Cleaning to A1 Professional Cleaning LLC.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is proposal for asbestos consulting not to exceed $3,500 for the old MHMR building with Aston, with Austin Environmental.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is an agreement with TransUnion for the provision of demographic data searches.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is award of bid number 19-085 for janitorial paper... Number fourteen is award of bid number 19-085 for janitorial paper products recommended award for Gulf Coast Paper Company.
Move approval?
Motion made second. Discussion?
I'm sorry, go second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number fifteen is renewal of contract 19-094R for printing with Thorpe's Printing Services and Tops Printing.
Move approval? A and B? Second.
Motion made second to approve A and B. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number sixteen is contract number CIP 19527 with Hunting Services for HVAC control upgrade at the jail in the amount of $98,934 using U.S. Communications Cooperative Contract 15-JLP-023.
I think that's communities.
Communities cooperative.
Okay, U.S. Communications Cooperative.
And I'll move the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seventeen is approval of the final plat of Rainbow Acres Second Installment, Block Number Seven, lots 2A and 3A, 24.355 acres, being an amending plat of Rainbow Acres Second Installment, Block Seven, lots 2 and 3, Maria Kagan Survey, A-28, Brazos County, Texas, sites located Precinct Two.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eighteen is approval of the final plat of Lot 4R, being a replat of lots 4 and 5, 3.362 acres of the Estates Farrell Creek subdivision, volume 14499, page 162, Brazos County Official Records, Colwell Baker Survey, A-4, Brazos County, Texas. Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nineteen is approved Treasury Report for October 2018.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty is expenditure journal entries FY 18/19, 12-0037 through 12-0042.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-one is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval? A and B? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-two is budget of minimums, budget of minimums FY 18/19, 12.1 through 12.9.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-three is personnel change status.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-four is payment of claims claimed to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8010523 through claim number 8010767.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Let's get down to number twenty-seven is acknowledgment of monthly reports submitted in November 2018. Number twenty-eight, Sheriff's Court on inmate population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We have 660 inmates, 560 male, 100 females. We have 48 with ankle monitors or electronic monitoring, and 17 veterans.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Number twenty-nine is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner? Hearing none other, the number thirty is call for citizen input and/or concerns.
Thirty seconds or less? I just want to turn these in, copy for each. I want to make clear, I only got thirty, okay? There were a group of people, but now they do not do this on my own.
Okay.
Also want to just say a second to compliment you all, the attentiveness that you give to each speaker that comes up here. The city shall remain nameless where you are speaking, and if it's not a topic that they approve of, they're... You can tell their texting, you can tell their checking emails or swiping, right? I don't know what they're doing, but they're not looking at the people who are speaking involved. Thank you for your attentiveness, even when it's the opposite of what you would like to hear.
Thank you, Karen.
Judge, just a reminder, there's a blood drive on Friday. I'm recruiting people to donate, so let me know.
All right. Blood drive on Friday.
Leslie has something.
I just wanted to introduce Aubrey. Most of you already know her. She's the new safety coordinator, so we will be coming around to visit with everybody. Hi.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you, Les.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other citizen input or concern? Hearing none, we will move back up to number twenty-five and convene an executive session for A is the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0785 for deliberations involving medical and psychiatric records for Brazos County employee. And B is an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss personnel action or matters. And we need Commissioners Court Candy, Jennifer, Amy, exec... Attorneys. And I think that's all we need in there, so... And the time is 10:41. It's 11:04. There's a motion to...
Move to approve certain medical procedures for two specific individuals? Second.
Motion made second to approve a medical procedure for certain two individuals. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Next item is to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.